After that will start and I'll try to catch people because I go a little bit. I'll try to catch people if they come in if I see them.
Okay, you just give us the go ahead when it is time to start and then we go.
After all the people spoke, let's just speak and I'll say we have one person ask us to.
We are presently in closed session, so I would entertain a motion to reconvene to open session after meeting in our closed session to consider the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body to discuss pending or probable litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, collective negotiating matters, and to review the minutes of the board's closed executive session meeting held on May 26, 2020.
Move for approval.
Thank you, and a second. Thank you very much. Carrie, would you please call the roll?
Deb Pitts.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Don LaRiva.
Yes.
Brumback.
Yes.
McDull.
Yes.
Robertson.
Yes.
Hurdles.
Yes.
With that motion approved, I would like to reconvene to open session. Carrie, can you please call the roll for open session?
Don LaRiva.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pitts.
Yes.
Brumback.
Here.
McDull.
Here.
Robertson.
Here.
Hurdles.
Here.
I would like to welcome our guests via Zoom teleconference to tonight's school board meeting. And at this time, I would ask the people to stand to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board Secretary Deb Pitts is unable to attend tonight's meeting in person. Therefore, I am appointing Board Member Leland, Dr. Leland Olson, as Acting Secretary from them. Thank you for helping us out. I will entertain a motion to approve the June 15, 2020 agenda as it has been presented this evening.
Salute.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any questions or discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Olson.
Yes.
Don LaRiva.
Yes.
Pitts.
Yes.
Brumback.
Yes.
McDull.
Yes.
Robertson.
Yes.
Hurdles.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the board's executive closed session meeting held on May 26, 2020.
Salute.
And any other discussion? Please call the roll. Brumback?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Don LaRiva?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
McDull?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Hurdles?
Yes.
At this time, the board has set assigned time for anyone wishing to address the board. So you will be unmuted.
I'll take over a second.
Okay.
I'm going to unmute our people calling in by phone. Is there anyone that's calling via phone that would like to address the board tonight?
Are you here now?
I hear no.
Okay, thank you very much.
But I do have one statement. There was, there was one community member who was unable to attend this evening named Beth White, who asked, who sent a letter to some board members and asked that we read it here. So what we're doing is we're doing just a brief little summary of a letter that was sent to the board that she wanted to make sure the board and community heard. And so this is from a community member of Beth White. And so I'm just kind of paraphrasing from, from what Beth wrote. Beth's letter was mostly to urge the board to strongly consider whether or not to allow masks to be used. And when we come back in the fall, she opposes masks being used for students. And I'm just going to read some direct things from her letter. Masks are not effective against particles as small as a virus. Furthermore, there are psychological, there are psychological effects from wearing masks, not being able to socialize, see smiles, subtle facial expressions that convey meaning. Much is lost. The special education field may be hit twice as hard. Many children work hard to understand social cues that don't come naturally, but now they stand to lose everything they've been taught. In addition, there was a few other facts where she wanted to share that COVID does not spread easily via contaminated surfaces or on animals like they thought earlier. So I asked the question, why would playgrounds be closed? In addition, she said that hundreds of other doctors and scientists have been sharing similar findings and research for months now regarding masks and other, other things such as the fact that COVID does not spread as easily as earlier thought. If anyone in authority is in, is to make a call on such restricted measures such as taking away PE, taking away eating lunch with friends, taking away sports, choir, wearing masks, et cetera, then the least that one can do is to explain where the evidence supports, to support such actions comes from. If such extremes were taken because of someone else, such as the health department that suggested it, then that authority should demand evidence that equals such actions. In her opinion, the issue of mask should be based solely on the person that has to wear it. And please, she urges the board and administration to use these facts, if helpful, and learn the facts that we did not know before. And so that's a basic summary of the letter from community member Beth White.
Thank you. And I had responded to her and said that you would be referencing her letter later in the meeting this evening. So would any board member like to remove any consent agenda items per separate action? Hearing that, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as recommended this evening.
Second.
And the discussion, please call the roll.
McDull?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Don LaRiva?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Brumback?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Hurdles?
Yes.
I would like to introduce David Courtney, Assistant Superintendent of Business Operations, to present his report this evening. Mr. Courtney.
So we, the, the board will be approving the minute budget they did this evening. This is the finance committee approved earlier tonight, so I just wanted to say that. And then I asked to give a brief update about facility construction during the summer right now. So there are about five buildings. Nelson Elementary is having a roofing at, pointing down this summer. They've already started. They're expecting completion date to come out first. At Leclerc, we did the asbestos removal. That's been completed already. They are now doing the flooring. The flooring is expected to be done before July 4th. And then there's case work that goes in the classrooms that will be done before July 31st. At Lincoln, the flooring, I'm going to start with DC one, the flooring and the doors, the fire doors that we're putting in and then flooring at the lower level. That's all expected to be done by July 21st. The gym, we've run into an issue with the gym floor and it deals with the water that we knew was getting into the gym from the outside. So we have dug up the back part of the building on the outside all the way down to the foundation and found that there is a drain that was put in that's not working properly. So it's going to require a hydro, hydro, hydraulic, hydraulic, I'm sorry, drain put in, hydrostatic, hydrostatic, I think you call it, drain put in to capture the water and have it prevented from entering the gym. That work is being done now. The second problem, which is a bigger problem, is, is that the gym flooring that was in place and the gym flooring that's being put in, there's about an inch and a half difference between the floors. So they will have to go in and level the floor first before they go in and do it. The problem with that is, is when they put that leveler in, it takes 10 days to sit and then they have to make sure it's okay before they put the flooring in. Bottom line is, is right now with these issues we've run into, we don't think that the gym floor at Lincoln will be done until Labor Day. Because the other problem that we have is, is that we have dug up the gym floor, but we've only dug up the gym floor up to the bleachers. We haven't taken out the floor yet underneath the bleachers because they all have to be removed and they're all electronic. So all that has to be taken out still. They're going to put in the first floor, then they have to take the bleachers out. They remove the remaining flooring. Then they have to go in and level that part of the flooring again, which is going to take another five or 10 days to sit once they do that. So with all those timelines, it's looking more like Labor Day. Okay. But it's the only way to get the floor to be put in the right way. It won't be, it's not level right now. And the, and the water issue is the water issue. When I was, we were over there, you stick a hose in that hole that's out there now. Within five minutes, there's water coming up from the floor underneath the gym where the gym's at. It's coming up from underneath, so it has to be fixed. So the, it looks like Labor Day. The high school, the roofing will start Wednesday and it's going to be done by July 7th. And the boilers have already been removed and the new ones will be installed by July 6th. So the only issue it looks like is going to be.
So that could affect some fall athletes or athletics as well as.
It would affect more PE if we had it when we came back to school. The athletics, probably not as much because it should be done before anybody would really start using the gym. It's really a PE issue in August if, if.
And we have, we have other spaces. The kids can go outside.
They can go outside. There's still a number of levels, a part of the gym that's not being done. They could run and do stuff too.
So none of the fall athletics are in the gym? Okay.
Not that early.
I guess I was thinking following along with following up.
I mean, we have other places.
So how much is it going to, are we going to run into fixing, fixing that drain and then the floor and all that? How much over are we going to be?
Probably 75 grand. The one thing that we're working on to try to offset that is, is as of what we're doing outside, there were some membranes, waterproof membranes that were being put in under the floor, under the, before the floor was installed. We had gone to the ninth degree, 10th degree to get the best membrane we could, given the water issues we thought we were running into. But with this, we could probably lower that membrane and that might save us about $50,000. So.
Dave, can you repeat that number? I didn't, I, it cut out whenever you said it.
Yeah, it'll, if we lower the membrane because of what we're doing, what's going to be under the floor, it'll be about a $50,000 reduction.
And then the answer to Dr. Olson's question.
About 75.
75.
About 25 grand.
Yep.
Sure it's done the right way.
And this pocket change.
Sure.
Well, the scope of the cost originally was right, at 300, correct?
Yeah, it's two, yeah, 282, I think, was the project. Yeah.
Yeah.
So are some of those coming out of this year, this year's budget, right?
All of those projects are coming out.
Any other questions for Mr. Courtney? Thank you very much for the update and your other report. We will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Henderson, do you have some good words for us this evening?
Yes, I'll start with a really quick one, just to put something on your radar screen again. It has to do with the board conference in November. I know it's not a time to keep on going conferences and things like that typically. The month to do that is actually June, but because of the uncertainty of whether conferences will even go on right now, the first day to even sign up is in the very end of July, so after our next July. And there will be some time. So what I'm just wanting to say is, you know, we have tentatively made plans to have additional board members go to the conference this year. And I, I'm just of the opinion right now, it's just going to play it by ear and see how. I'm not thinking we necess, we can talk about if they have a virtual conference and people want to do that if it's worth the money for us and you want, but just know that that's on our radar screen. We can, we'll see, we'll see how it's going within another month. And we might be further along. They might even announce whether or not they'll have it for sure or not. It very easily could be canceled, but I know that they'll probably do every effort to not, to not cancel. So I just wanted to at least be thinking about that conference. And I'll, as soon as I have email updates, I'll give you information on that and then we can talk about it again next month. Any questions on that before we go on? Okay, I wanted to give an update on two things kind of connected. Remote learning and issues of reopening in the fall. And as far as remote learning, basically, I just, I wanted to just kind of continue to stay where we are. We've now updated our staff as well as our parents on the feelings regarding remote learning. We're really wanting to get everyone's opinion on what we did well and what we needed to improve upon. And knowing that we went into remote learning in, we found it three days in advance that it was going to happen. We didn't have the technology in our teachers' hands to make it effective. And our teachers really stepped up, many of them, and did a really good job of that. When we come back in the fall, we'll be prepared in case we have to go into that remote learning setting. We're still hoping to have in, to have in-person learning with our students. But we want to, to everyone to know in the public that we are working with our teachers, our administrators to set up baselines for every grade level and subject. When I say baselines, I mean, what is going to be the minimum you will expect if you're in a remote learning setting as far as face-to-face time with the teacher, videos, assignments. There will certainly be grades if we go into remote learning this next year. That was something that was not able to happen this last year, but will happen in the, in the fall if we go into that. So those have started already with the discussions with the teachers and admin at different grade levels to develop those protocols and those, those baselines for each grade level. And we could expect by the middle of July to have something, hopeful by the middle of July, and certainly for registration on July 22nd, there, where we can say this is what remote learning will look like in the fall if we need to go into it. And kind of piggybacking off of that with, with reopening issues as well. Within the last few days, we surveyed our parents on issues involved in reopening. We want to get some opinions and some thoughts that parents have as well. In fact, one of the main questions was, you know, if District 7 was able to offer a remote learning option, would you take that option? And so we're trying to get numbers because we really need to get an idea of that form staffing. And there might be, no matter what happens in the next few months, there's going to be some parents that are not comfortable sending their students back regardless of precautions, regardless of what might be put in place. We need to, to be prepared for what, for the students that either are not going to walk through the doors but that we still have to educate. And we need to be, to be thinking about that. And so right now, we're still waiting. We've got our early guidance from ISBE. Our, we'll call it the phase three guidance, which is what we're allowed to do right now and over the summer. And it was nice in that they finally are allowing us to do some driver's ed behind the wheel. They're allowing us to do summer school remotely. We could actually do summer school with up to 10 students in a class, but we're in a situation now where it just makes more sense to do it remotely. Although, for example, when we had the driver's ed permit test, we brought students in 10 at a time to take that permit test. And so we've got, maybe they might happen to get on the constitution test as well. There's a couple situations. So the good thing is we're testing out our remote learning over the summer. Then the, I'll call it the more robust remote learning over the summer where we're taking grades and the expectations have been ramped up a little bit. But the big thing that we're winning from this initial survey, I mean, it's, at this point, it's anonymous. We don't have names. We do know what grade level the students are, at least in grade band. We asked them to designate K through 2, 3 through 5, middle school or high school. What we'll do next, we'll take the data from this. We'll start to get an idea. Okay, how many students do we think are not going to be coming through the door next year, regardless of the situation that we're in? And how many might prefer a remote learning situation? We'll, we'll tailor the next survey that goes out a little bit later, once we get our guidance from ISBE of how many students we can have in class and then things like that. We'll, we'll tailor that next set to where they have to tell us, look, we've got to get names this time. We'll have to get names. We'll have to get schools and we'll, so we can really start to plan this a little bit more. But what our plan is, is once we get that guidance, we're, we're very hopeful that they allow for someone to control over what we're able to do. What, we're hoping they set some baseline guidance, some recommendations, but then they allow us a little bit of leeway, at least on some issues. An example of that, so I think it's very, it's going to be very difficult for ISBE to come down and say that everyone has to be six feet apart at all times. It's just, I think what they're going to say is make every effort to do it when you can. Even within our classrooms, there's very, very few classrooms that can fit the number of students that we've got in them at six feet apart in the arrangement that you're supposed to be sitting, which is all facing the same direction. And it's almost ridiculous when you think about what kindergarten classroom would look like in that scenario. You just, it would almost take away from what kindergarten would be. And so what our hope is, is that as we get these guys, we're working on coming up with our, our procedures and what we think they're going to be, kind of waiting for the guidance to come in. But what we hope to do is, again, before registration, be able to lay out for parents, this is what it's going to be. This is what a kindergarten class is going to be. We're, we're going to try our best to space kids the most we can. We'll talk about issues like PE. Right now, we're thinking it's very likely that, that middle school, high school, we won't dress out for PE. We'll talk about whether or not we were able to stagger times for passing periods and entrance and exits. We'll have this all, we'll talk about what the cafeteria is going to look like. For, you know, I can see for kindergarten, we'll say this is what the classroom is going to look like. We'll talk about the issue of masks and whether or not they'll be available. You know, right now, I think it's not really feasible that, that we would be saying every student wears a mask every single day. I'm hopeful that we'll get some guidance on that, but we certainly would allow masks for those people that want it. We haven't made that decision and we're waiting on the guidance from ISBE on that. But I think the thing that's important to note is that we want to be able to give parents an idea, this is what it's going to look like. This is what school will be like for your child. And then they can make that decision. Am I okay with sending my child under those conditions and what you said? Or would I rather try to do a remote learning setting based on what you said? And so that's kind of where we're at right now. We're, we're starting to, to have conversations about what it might look like. You know, a few things that we've talked about, I just want at least going to throw out there. You know, class size is, is an issue. We of course always have thought that class sizes, in, in general, the lower class size, the better that it is. Our elementary classes though are actually fairly reasonably sized, all under 25, I would say. It's kind of in that, in that, in that range, certainly at the undergrad levels they are. So, and we really don't have a lot of space. If we decided that we wanted to get our class sizes below 20, we don't, besides not having the faculty do it, we don't have the space within the buildings to really do it as well. So you, you kind of have to get creative a little bit. For instance, the only way, if we were really going to lower our class size at the elementary or middle school level, would be for us to really focus only on the core subjects. And maybe have our special, you know, have some of our specialists take on a regular class. Those are the type of decisions, you know, is that worth it to do something like that? And, you know, if we just focused on math and, for the most part, math and, and reading at the younger levels, sprinkle in some social studies and, and science. But when, when you talk about something like having specialists or exploratory teachers teaching regular classrooms, that's the one way that, that you can lower class size in the existing space that you have. It's, it's just conversations that we're starting to have with teachers. We'll bring in the union really next week, actually, to talk with us about these issues as well. And then we'll keep the board updated on, as we start to move sort of towards these decisions. We wouldn't make a major decision like that without informing the board and having some input from you guys as well. Right now, I would say that a hybrid model, which is part in school and part remote, seems very difficult and unlikely that that would work for us and for our families. Because there's all kinds of issues of childcare, how transportation makes it almost impossible to go a half day and then send people home and then have another group come in. It just seems, it seems unlikely to have that. That's not to say that we won't have to go into remote learning for a few days, even with kids that are in, in the, in the in-person. But it seems like most likely, we're really hopeful that, that that hybrid is not something that becomes a reality for us. But again, we're starting to talk about the possibility of parents being to opt into remote learning. We're thinking right now that if parents did that, we would ask them to opt in. If they were going to be 100% remote learning, that we would ask them to do it probably by semester. So they would be committing to doing that for an entire semester if they wanted. Again, this is still kind of up in the air, but what we can have is some of the ones to do remote learning one week and then come to a classroom another week. You know, it's, it's, it won't work with our class sizes and with the makeup. And so we'll start talking in the next few weeks with some teachers to line up a few to, to be. Remote learning, we'll, we'll get our, our teachers that really enjoyed it and really had a positive experience and who are very comfortable with the technology and probably see if we can get some lined up to be 100% remote learning teachers next year. So those, again, are the conversations that we're having. Right now, in our survey that we've taken, we've had over 3,000 people respond, respond to our survey. And best guess, it's, they're representing about 4,200 kids. That's the best guess of those 3,000 people. And right now, out of those 4,200, there's, there's only been about 110 unique students who the parents have said, I'm going to keep my child home in the fall. So that's not, it's, it's not terrible. Now, there's, there's a lot of other people that are unsure. There's some people that are going to wait and see what our, you know, our situation looks like. But there's only been 110 students, 78 people representing about 110 students that have said, I'm not going to send my child by the phone, pretty much regardless of what, of what happens in this situation. So I take that as a, as a positive. And I mean, we of course hope to be in person as much as possible. We want to give kids their, their old school experience if they can, but we want parents to feel comfortable as well. So just know that we continue to work on the procedures, the protocols moving forward. And we're, we're taking advice from teachers, from parents. We're, we're taking, taking in all our information right now. And in the coming weeks, especially once we get that guidance from ISBE, we'll be making some final decisions on some of the big things that we have to make. So with that, does any board member have any questions at this time about reopening? And know that you'll get updates weekly from me as well.
So I got a question on the, if, if they go to a remote learning in some, would those teachers keep the class size about what they would be normal to? Or would they be able to take on more students with, with remote learning itself or?
That's something that we'd have to negotiate with our, with our teachers union. But I think that that would be up for debate depending on what it was at each grade level. Like if, it could be that if you're sitting there with 30 in a grade level, that it might make sense for that person to take all those 30 students. But again, we have to talk with the EEA about that and see if it's reasonable. It could be slightly different, but the expectations would be high. I mean, right now, our thinking is that if, if, if it's a remote learning, not, not the situation where they send everybody home, but if someone does 100% remote learning, the teacher is a, a remote learning teacher, we think that they will be in the building, in the school, doing that job from the school in that situation. So they, they would have a lot of things that they would do, so we wouldn't want to overload them with kids. But it is possible, depending on our number, that we might have to ask people to take a little bit of a bigger load. But we will certainly, that's something we will have to negotiate.
Is there any chance the regional office of education has any kind of input with the remote learning? Because I mean, what if we only had five students in a grade? And then you can look at other school districts in the area that have the same issue, join forces, use.
I think that would be ideal. I don't see it happening.
Okay.
You know, and in fact, District 7 is in a better situation than some of the smaller districts, you know, because we probably can fill a few classrooms at different rating levels. But I, you know, the ROE does not get a lot of different types of funding. And for that to happen, it would take a lot of effort from, from, from that office in order to, to make that happen. Not that it's impossible, but I do think that it's a lot to ask and doubt seriously.
Because I would think different districts would have different curriculum studies and things like that.
I think it could be overcome. I mean, I think that you would just have to know that as a remote learning student, you're going to get a general second grade curriculum, you know. But that is true as well. Everyone's got different standards and different curricula, different textbooks, you know. So it, not that it wouldn't come with challenges, but it's, it is, and again, I don't think it's going to happen.
How many cert, were, I'm going to say, sent out or requests or whatever out of your certain little 3,000?
We sent it to every, to every parent. We sent it to every, to every parent. So I don't know the unique numbers. We've got about 7,500 students, but that probably, it's about 6,000 parents, I'm just kind of guessing.
80, 800 last month, broken down.
Yeah.
5,800, so we're over half.
Yeah, that's wow.
That's helpful. When you get down to actual household, that's probably having a difference.
Yeah.
So it's.
Figure roughly two and a quarter that some people have put out, something like that.
And we're closing that survey down tomorrow.
Okay.
We sent that out to all parents today, that tomorrow, at the end of the day, tomorrow's going to be the last day for that survey. We got great results, and we think we've got plenty of data that this, we'll go ahead and keep it open for one more day to allow those parents that haven't filled out yet.
Wow.
Any?
I do have, I have two quick questions. First, has there been any discussion about allowing teachers who may, due to age or comorbidity, want to teach remote, have that opportunity? Or is that something you'll discuss with the union?
We got to discuss that with the union, but I think we would want to get teachers that want to do it. I mean, that's, that would be our goal is to, you know, we've already asked our administration, hey, can you target a few people kind of in your mind that you know had a good experience with remote learning? And well, those will be the people we target. But we'll certainly talk with the union, with the EEA, and say, how do you want us to kind of go about this process? But we want to get someone who wants to do remote learning for that mission. And of course, we probably, you know, our hope is it's just a one-year thing, and we're not going to be remote learning for years, you know, for years to come here. But, but yes, they will, we will get people, if they're going to do remote learning, it's going to be someone that wants to do that, for sure.
And I guess my, the root of my question is, you know, what you hear is, kids don't get it, kids are fine, but there's so many people that aren't kids in our buildings. And so I worry that, you know, how we're going to handle that, that issue, right? If we have staff that are concerned. So that was kind of the root of that question. My other question is just the second policy. Has there been any discussion, typically it's 24 hours fever-free, has there been any discussion of looking at changing that? I know that's one question I've received from a few members of the public.
We're talking about that. We'll go along with the guidelines that come for that particular issue with the Illinois Department of Health and CDC guidelines. Well, whatever they recommend, we'll go with what the experts think as far as being fever-free and stuff, and handle those issues.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, that's my report.
Thank you very much, very informative. At this time, the board will move on to action considerations, first of which is approval of personnel resignations and retirements. Dr. Spine.
Thank you, Mrs. Bertles. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve personnel matters related to resignations or retirements of employees as discussed earlier this evening in executive session.
Salute.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any questions or discussion? Please call the roll. Olson?
Yes.
From back?
Yes.
Donal Reba?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
McDoll?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Approval of personnel employments.
Dr. Spine. Thank you, Mrs. Bertles. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve personnel matters related to the employment, compensation, or transfer of employees as discussed earlier this evening in executive session.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Next time. Questions or discussion? Please call the roll. Pitts?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Donal Reba?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
From back?
Yes.
McDoll?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Approval of 2020-2021 general education supplies bid. Mr. Court.
Thank you, Mrs. Bertles. Recommended the Board of Education approve the general education supply bid for the 2020-21 school year in the amount of $15,550.39.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Please call the roll. Donal Reba?
Yes.
McDoll?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
From back?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Approval of 2019-2020 amended budget. Mr. Court.
Thank you, Mrs. Bertles. Recommended the Board of Education adopt the amended budget for 2019-2022 school year as approved earlier by the Finance Committee.
So.
Second. Any questions or discussion? The evening now, please call the roll. Olson?
Yes.
Donal Reba?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
From back?
Yes.
McDoll?
Yes.
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Approval of resolution to extend the term of District Seven's participation in the Mississippi Valley Employee Benefits Intergovernmental Cooperative. Mr. Court.
Thank you, Mrs. Bertles. This recommendation of the next three will involve the district's participation in health insurance pool and property casualty pool through Mississippi. So it is recommended the Board of Education adopt a resolution to extend the term of District Seven's participation and membership in the Mississippi Valley Employee Benefits Intergovernmental Cooperative through June 30, 2023.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Please call the roll. Donal Reba?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
From back?
Yes.
McDoll?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Approval of voting members of the Mississippi Valley Employee Benefits Intergovernmental Cooperative. Mr.?
Thank you, Mrs. Bertles. Recommended the Board of Education adopt a resolution to reaffirm the appointment of voting members for District Seven in the Mississippi Valley Employee Benefits Intergovernmental Cooperative.
So move.
Second.
Questions on this? Please call the roll. McDoll?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Donal Reba?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
From back?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Approval of resolution to extend the term of District Seven's participation in the Mississippi Valley Property Casualty Intergovernmental Cooperative. Mr. Court.
Thank you, Mrs. Bertles. Recommended the Board of Education adopt a resolution to extend the term of District Seven's participation and membership in the Mississippi Valley Property Casualty Intergovernmental Cooperative through June 30, 2023.
So move.
Second.
Questions? Please call the roll. From back?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Donal Reba?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
McDoll?
Yes.
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Approval of voting members for the Mississippi Valley Property Casualty Intergovernmental Cooperative. Mr. Court.
Thank you, Mrs. Bertles. Recommended the Board of Education adopt a resolution to reaffirm the appointment of voting members for District Seven in the Mississippi Valley Property Casualty Intergovernmental Cooperative.
So move.
Second. Questions, discussion? Please call the roll. Olson?
Yes.
Donal Reba?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
From back?
Yes.
McDoll?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Second reading and adoption of the Board Policy Manual. Dr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mrs. Bertles. This is the culmination of what we started back in September and worked throughout the winter, developing a new Board Policy Manual. It was brought forth for a first reading at the last board meeting, the May 26th Board of Education meeting. It's now being brought forward for a second reading and adoption. And when adopted, this policy manual will replace all existing board policies. So it's recommended the Board of Education approve the second reading and adoption of the new Board Policy Manual, which one is adopted will replace all existing policies.
Salute.
Second. Questions or discussion? Please call the roll. Olson?
Yes.
From back?
Yes.
Donal Reba?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
McDoll?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Approval of 2020-2021 Title I School-Wide Waivers. Dr. Henderson.
This is a routine item in order to apply for the Title I Grant. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the 2020-21 Title I School-Wide Waivers.
So move.
Questions or discussion? Please call the roll. McDoll?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Donal Reba?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
From back?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Approval of revised 2020-2021 school calendar. Dr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mrs. Bertles. An interesting one, we were informed within the last month that the Illinois Legislature had declared Election Day, November 3rd, as a school holiday, and schools cannot be in session on that day. And so we had to amend the school calendar Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, as a day of non-student attendance, which we were basically just taking our day and adding one day to the end of the school year, to May 24th. So we informed the EEA of this, which is part of our requirement to do as well, and will lead you to approve the revised 2021 calendar.
The motion.
Salute.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Please call the roll. Olson?
Yes.
McDoll?
Yes.
Donal Reba?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
From back?
Yes.
Robertson? Bertles?
Yes.
Approval of the 2020-2021 Schedule for Regular Board of Education Meetings. Dr. Henderson.
She just got kicked off, so we'll let her back in. She needs to back in. We talked about the board meeting schedule, decided to keep it similar to what it's been in previous years. So it's recommended that the Board of Education, the attached schedule to establish the dates for the regular Board of Education meetings for the 2020-21 school.
Move for approval.
Second. Any questions about the board meetings? Please call the roll. McDoll?
Yes.
Donal Reba?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
From back?